Thank you. We'll start with a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? The approval of the minutes from our April 30 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded the motion.
All those in favor? Great. Do we have a student rep here tonight?
We don't here, but just a note that please check on the list. There's a lot of things going on in the next couple of weeks at the high school. So it seems that they're on the agenda here. Right, so just if you're to know that the academic awards, excuse me, NHS inductions at 6:00 PM and the academic awards are at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, there's students for all the sporting events.
Do you need anything from this committee regarding RSVPs to any of the graduation?
The graduation will be the one to get that to hear from.
Okay, so if you have an already RSVP to Mr. Hastings, if you're going to be attending the high school graduation?
Libby.
Oh, Libby.
Yeah.
Okay. PTA? Special needs pack?
Nothing, I understand.
Thank you. CTA?
Nothing.
Is there any public comment? There being none, we'll give it right over to you, Mr. Chief of Department.
All right, so the first couple of bullets there, we have the strategic plan, the elementary, middle school, and high school improvement plans. We had the opportunity at the tri-council meeting, previous to this meeting, to go over those changes and each of the groups, you know, each of those plans, a lot of work went into by all the school councils in each building and the strategic planning committee. So, you know, at this point, you had a chance to hear about those plans. We're just looking for, you know, motions to formally accept those plans.
Great. I'll entertain a motion then that we approve the strategic plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the strategic plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Should we group together? We're voting on the school.
Yeah, I think it's maybe one motion just to accept the school improvement plans.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Clint Elementary School, Clint Middle School, Clint High School, school improvement plans.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Great. What's happening? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading.
No, that's fine. You're more than welcome soon. So last school three meeting, we heard from the elementary school and the middle school and special education about a little bit some of the vision for next year. Tonight, we have the high school, so Mr. Hastings, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Sorry I missed the last meeting. That was actually in sunny Miami. Bringing my daughter back from college and she was kicking and scratching quite a bit, but so sorry that I missed that. We put this together, Gash, myself. Hopefully, a lot, some of these things you've heard mentioned already in one way or the other, but some of these are new. So these are projected changes, obviously, for Clinton High School for the next school year. Really happy, really, really happy to announce French. Monsieur Evan McKillop will be teaching. It was his minor in college. It's been a few years, the last few years, we've been running just Spanish after Mr. Davidson retired. So we're able to bring this back and for next year and hopefully we'll be able to continue with this and see where we are. Numbers are good. Numbers are good for next year. We did contact the middle school for eighth graders coming in. It was a very positive response and when we opened it up to the high school, the present freshmen, sophomores, they indeed did respond. So we're looking at a good number of students to pick up that second language. I think it's just, it really, really was a sore spot for us to run only one language these past maybe four years or so. So this is something we're very excited about and I know that Evan is working real hard and will continue to work this summer to refresh his background in French and we'll be offering at least one section, one section at this time from Evan McKillop from our ELA department. Digital media has been, I don't know, Paul, we run this for probably about the last maybe eight, nine years, I'm guessing, that's just a rough, and it's really, really a very popular and very successful class and it's more than a class, it's a lot of hands-on, it serves not only the class, the department, the school, but the community. And with such talents, everything from writing, editing, filming, we are able to see students who advance and therefore we are offering a second level, a digital media two. Some of those students probably could walk into it right now, probably are at that level. And so in order to keep that balance and also have people at the appropriate level, we will run a digital media two. Right now, we're running two sections of digital media and they are knocking the door for more and so with three sections then, and now we'll be offering this up. So this is really something very exciting and again, I know I'm repeating myself here, but the fruits of this are not just the academic component, but the service to the whole building, the whole selling of the school and reaching out into the community and it's very successful. What we've seen with the Spanish III this year, as we went registering for next year, it was almost, let's say about 40 students who were in Spanish III this present year looking to go on to Spanish IV. Some of them felt that they were not really, you know, as advanced as the other half of the group, let's say. And so we came up with this idea to the department that those who felt that they were really, really ready, we included, we introduced, and we will be introducing, a Spanish IV honors. Because those students who were feeling that they were not ready were feeling that they did not want to go on to a Spanish IV. So there'll be two levels next year for those who probably are maybe not as advanced, not as comfortable, whether it's dialogue, you know, grammar or what have you. So we have a Spanish, honors Spanish IV, that's for the first time, which feeds into our Spanish V, which in itself, and this is something to look forward down the road, is I would like to see that honors, that's that honors, that's, excuse me, the Spanish V become an AP course because it really is at that level. So next year, we'll run Spanish I, II, III, college prep level, Spanish IV or college prep, and Spanish IV and honors. And that honors IV could also very easily now maybe a very smooth transition into the honor, the Spanish V. So that's something that we're working, we're introducing. I know I spoke to you about this already, where we're transitioning also from with the, this being, this next year, not this next month with Engineering in the Future, but next year will be the last year that we are using Engineering in the Future for an MCAS. So in preparation for that, the biology and what have you, we're taking the physical science and we're bringing it to becoming an introductory physics class and we're also in honors physics, which will replace the physical science. That's something I have spoken about it. Mr. Sermak has worked hard on this. We have a curriculum that does not really have to change an awful lot. So we're also, we're a step ahead, I think, on that step, any of that process anyways. So all freshmen, next year, will be taking, instead of the physical science and the honors physical science, will be taking the physics. About, I don't know, about a month ago, Dr. Meyer, we had a phone call from, this was pretty interesting, from the Favreau Forestry Company up in Sterling, Brian and his wife, Lou. And they talked, they met with us and there's a whole area of that field, no pun intended, arbitraries, arbitraries, working on trees and all different aspects. There's a whole field where they're not finding the appropriate workers or talents or knowledge and so not looking for us to fill their jobs, this particular company, but just a real pride in the world that they work in. So they came and they met with us and talking about preparing that in that field and horticulture and, you know, the whole science of trees and forestry. The same time, we had an interest in our own department, we have a greenhouse project here and a teacher who is very interested in that area. So one clicked for the other. So we're going to introduce the horticultural class next year and hopefully, I know we're rushing this, but maybe that's something that we can work on for a articulation because I know Mount Watchuose Community College is somewhat interested in that. Essex Community College up on the North Shore does offer this area. So we took, we looked at some of their curriculum and we're going to try to bring that in, but we are offering the course. There are students interested. We can begin with the greenhouse, we can begin in that area and offer the, next year, it will be a five-credit half-year course and then hopefully we see success with that, we could probably piggyback that with a second section, the second half of the year. And I mentioned in the, in the presentation of the school improvement plan, we are offering SAT classes outside of the school day. And the school council talked about this and that's why it's really good to have students on that board. We got a fee, they would feed to us the idea of, you know, in the fall, maybe it would be easier to run it in the afternoon, in the spring in the evening or vice versa, something like that. So we're planning on doing half a year during the afternoon, half a year at night. Students may pay a fee for it, but we can use that as towards their testing fee. And that way, there's a commitment on their part, they're invested in it. And so we are offering SAT class, we've worked with the ELA department, they are very interested, we have people who would be willing to do this. So that, those are the courses that we'll be offering for next year. Any questions on any of those? I know I talked about physics already once. Okay, the focus program under the special ed was our EDB program here. That will be restructured. In place of having the six classes contained in that room next year, we will be sending our students into the classrooms and if these students on a given day, if they're struggling because of what their disability or whatever it may be, but have an IEP that calls for that type of service or whatever, there is someone who would be, who'd be in the classroom supporting them. But if there's a need for whatever it may be, for a student to spend time in that focus room, he or she, the teacher, would follow and bring them down there and work with them one-on-one and then return to the classroom. That's in a nutshell. But the focus program, as we know it, is a self-contained all day long, will no longer be structured that way. We're moving towards more of the, for appropriate term, inclusion, including them in the classroom and service them upon need, upon day, upon period. When someone trained in that, you know, that area of the focus would be available. We do have, we started this last year where one of our ELL teachers goes into some of our math and science classes because we found that areas that needed to be strengthened for our students were, in the MCAS, were these areas. And this is something that we just, first year, last year was my first year, we won't know the success of that until the scores come back, but the feeling that the students have expressed is that they enjoy it, they feel comfortable with that support and I think that we're going to see an improvement in scores in areas, but also more of a sense of comfort and progress because of their support like this, okay? So that's something we're going to try and continue to try. Ingenuity is a program, Dr. Meyer, I met with them, it's an online program that gives us the opportunities, everything from summer school programs, but more importantly, make a credit recovery program. If we have a student who's hospitalized for some reason in September and comes, is not coming back until, let's say, February or March, we can implement, we can offer this program and they can be staying online, on task with it and in keeping up, for whatever reason it might be, they're missing. But, so it's newer to us. We presently use a program called Edgysir, but we're using that really just for summer school. Summer schools have really disappeared in the area. The closest one the last couple of years was kind of Marlboro, or further away. So you talk to transportation, the price was $200. This, the one we use for summer school is about $95 and it's online. This offers us more, Ingenuity. And so we have talked with them, we've met with them, we have offers from them, we have discussions about different programs we can use. So that's something that's always going to be available, I think will be available.
Along with Ingenuity, because we are part of the FLAC collaborative, there's actually a discounted rate to access the Ingenuity courses through our collaborative. So that's something that we are able to access and Ingenuity will probably be the, well, it will be the platform that we'll be using through the FLAC collaborative for the alternative program too.
And these programs, Ingenuity, they see what we offer, what our curriculum is all about and they, they offer that, our curriculum, so to speak, how it's designed through their program. So they're taking our, we take the lead on that. The alternative ed, that's been up discussed. I mean, I could give you five, six names right now of students who could, who would be serviced by that, who benefit from that, you know, feel comfortable, be, you know, just a perfect fit. So as this develops, this is something that will be very, very, very beneficial to us here at Clinton High School. There's no need, we've talked about that a few times, so. Third slide, I haven't messed it up yet. Okay. Offering a QCC early college program. We've met and I've met with Quinsey Community College, this has also been mentioned previously, right now it's an early, early college program where it's geared towards our incoming juniors and so they would take one course each of the semester. So four courses in ELA, there's a math, there's a sociology, and something else in the arts, I think. And each of those, one a semester, they would take it here, online, and those courses automatically transfer or goes with them to Quinsey if that's the route they choose. Now, this is not really something towards an at-risk student, it's someone who's going to be committed to it. And also, they would offer to commit and do the testing that they need to do for the placement at Quinsey. They were offered, Quinsey would come in here and do it free of charge, any student who may be interested. So he or she finishes, graduates from Clinton High School, they go to Quinsey, they're already carrying four college credits. And four college credits at Quinsey are transferable to UMass, to Worcester State, to Pittsburgh State, et cetera, et cetera.
That's what I say, those courses are mass transferable courses. So that means they'll be recognized not only at Quinsey, but they'd be recognized at any of the state schools.
So in reality, they could be taking four courses for UMass, if that's the path that they take. And a congratulations to Ellen Welsh, who is our business department, Educational Business Department. She has developed the accounting program. First she took an accounting class and became, developed it into an accounting II, there's two levels of accounting, and then she would reach out and she was able to establish these articulations again with continuation to these colleges with Quinsey and Mount Watchuose Community College. So again, students taking these courses with these colleges can be receiving credits. So, you know, this is what we're looking at. We do service students who struggle and we also need to be servicing students who are interested in taking those college crap courses at this time in high school. So those are, you know, that's a great accomplishment this past year from Mrs. Welsh. Next year, I know that Mrs. Mifer, who works here, will be working over the middle school, you know, we'd like to see, you know, this, you know, dialogue and working together with them, maybe even someday, you know, our band, some of those seventh and eighth graders in our band with us. But that's something I know that she'll work closely with the middle school, the music program, with this new system of sharing the teacher between the two buildings. It's a nice bridge and hopefully that will, will go. The advisor, advisee mentors we have, that's all of our first period of the day, which we used to call homeroom. We have, we have teachers working closely with their, with their students. One thing we haven't been able to see is because there's never really been a position, so to speak, of just, you know, here and there, staff volunteering to do different activities. But I know that we talked, Dr. Meyer and I discussed this recently, there's some grants out there and we could probably tie these into it because it is a safety, that's one of the things we're calling for, develop this even more. So we put this into place a couple of years ago for NEAS to see. It's in place, but, you know, to have activities and, and they, you know, different types, there's a whole, you know, spectrum of activities could be. It could be something we've done in the past in Christmas time, doing some fun things. We've done, we've had at the beginning of the year in a period eight where we've got biographical and interest surveys of students, but there needs to be someone in charge of it. So that's what we're, we've talked about, you know, working on that, okay? Initial steps to relocate the first robotics to CHS. Now, we're talking here with vision and I can't, we can't say enough about NIPRO and all, all this support. It's also important, I think, that, you know, we look for some, we're talking here, we're talking about vision here, maybe, you know, the idea of our students being here on location for those early stages and the building, the assembling, the designing and, you know, it's looking around this building and it's something we want to do together with NIPRO to make, to first, to make a transition like that, if that's the route that we decide upon. But it's, it's respectfully in dialogue with them to see what is, you know, the easiest, what's the best, what's the most beneficial, what's accessible and what could be helpful to our students in this program. There's a history, of a long history, of a successful relationship with collaboration with NIPRO at first and we want to always respect that and keep that. So this is, we're talking just, you know, a dialogue or a vision that we would like to, you know, to undertake here and initiate that, so.
And I think that if we, through some of our conversations, that if we're able to bring some of those machinery, some of that machinery and relocate it up here, it's also things we might be to integrate into the curriculum more, to provide more of that embedded support of the first program as we go through.
So.
I think that's it, right?
That's it.
All right.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, so we're, so we're talking about relocating first. We are talking about moving the existing equipment that's down at, at NIPRO right now.
Yeah, I just, I think, I'm sorry, not all of it.
Okay.
Some of it, in fact, the mill machine was up here at one of our, before getting relocated down to there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we roll it up here, it's plugged in the walls, ready to go.
Okay.
But, you know, we're looking at also manufacturing, the way we manufacture and we're, you know, we talked about a CNC router, which would really help us along without bringing all types of equipment. That one piece would really take care of a lot of our manufacturing, so.
So the stuff we're not bringing up here, is it just because we don't think that it'll get used?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
Space needs probably the biggest thing.
All right.
At this point. And we will still, you know, as Mr. Hastings says, it's initial, where we're not abandoning that playing field's fantastic down there, obviously.
Right.
You know, 27 years of robots and robot parts is a great resource to have.
Right.
So, you know, it's still going to be available, but we can see the plus of being able to work here, the different hours we're able to get in here versus down there.
Yep.
And more, what the kids can get more hands-on here. You know, we can really push it through and as Dr. Meyer said, if I get manufactured into my engineering program.
Sure.
You know, we're able to walk out of my room from design and go build.
Yep. No, I.
And it's, like I said, it's mutual, we need dialogue, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not, you know, we're not so appreciative of the world.
I think it's a good idea.
Anything else?
Dr. Myers, with all the expansion of these programs, what does that do for us as far as expanding Perkins?
So a lot of these things are, you know, we've been working with some of the teachers on looking at our Perkins grant. We got the, we got the program improvement grant this year. We've been working on developing and refining our Perkins plan and trying to get that more. So yeah, our goal would be, I think for next year, what you might see is some additional courses that we might be, you know, that we'll vet throughout the year to try to look at to see if we can develop more of these into the Perkins programs. But that's, you know, Ellen Welsh is one of those teachers with the accounting stuff, trying to make sure we're developing that into a true kind of recognized Perkins program. Yeah. Thank you.
Now, that's something, I don't mean to go back, but I am going back, that whole thing on the horticulture, that was just, you know, talk about the community coming into us to suggest that we take a new route, a new path in courses because of the need of positions out there in the world. And these are just, they're a great, great couple, the Favros. They were, and they, they have come back since then and met with the teacher on curriculum and what is needed in the workplace, so to speak. There's all different types of positions in that, in that, in that field, whether you're a climber, as they say, or, or, you know, heavy equipment, or just the study of the tree and what have you. So I was just really impressed that they, you know, they came to us and we were looking at the greenhouse idea, but this is, you know, taking it a step further.
A lot of opportunities.
Yeah, it really is.
Thank you. All right, so the, the next agenda item is FY '19 budget update. So I gave you a handout here. So if you look at the long page, you know, the top, the top shows sort of where we kind of stand right now. So that number, the 22817623 is pretty much the number that the town has indicated that they support for our budget. You can see, just unplug it.
That's why I'm lying.
Oh my God, what's going to pop up on there?
Watch your emails, dude.
So the, so you can see that number, that's basically what we've been indicated by the finance committee that they're going to support for our budget. You can see, you know, in the, in the, sort of the cells below there, that the, the original one that we had in the, in our budget hearing was the 23024. So that was about a $200,000 change. So then you can see that what we've also, when you get to the bottom of the page here, you'll see that we've basically, to try to get this budget to work, we've increased the circuit breaker contribution by $100,000 from 750 to 850. We've increased the school choice contribution by $94,000 and change from 500 to 594. And if you walk down, the, there's a big list of cuts and adds. Most of these we talked about last time, or I shared with you last time, we had a lot of it was related to the alternative school on the top. There's a bunch of things in there about the general supplies and the contracted services and instructional equipment. Those are things just kind of really going through with the, you know, the fine-toothed comb and seeing what we might be able to finagle out of there. We did add a kindergarten teacher in this budget, that's an increase of $55,000. We eliminated a seventh and eighth grade science teacher position, but we were, that was, that was a vacant position and were able to cover those classes with the current staffing, the way it kind of all played out anyway. Sick leave buyback, I think we mentioned this one last time too, basically going to try to pay two of those employees this year instead of deferring that to next year. It's an existing debt and we should be able to cover that this year. We were able to cut the transportation, reduce that a little bit. Right now, the way this is drawn up, it cuts the director of athletics position, although we'll talk about that when we get to the backside of this page. It did include an addition of $15,000 for a school resource officer. The last safety meeting, the, I know the police kind of got some, you know, their budget, they weren't, they had to cut a lot out of their overtime and the chief had said he thinks that they can still pull that switch off to get a school resource officer who's on a Monday to Friday schedule that would be able to work kind of for school hours and be here consistently. He would just need some time, some assistance in covering some of the overtime on the weekends by moving him to a Monday to Friday. And, and that was the, kind of the figure we came to and I think, you know, so I just wanted to earmark that so we could try to get that SRO position in. I think before, you know, obviously we'll have to do sort of a memorandum of agreement over the summer to talk about, talk about the logistics of that and, and all those types of things. Vocation, that last chunk there, vocational, private day, private res, that's just basically looking at our out-of-district tuitions and just updating those figures based on current placements as opposed to, you know, the last, the last round. And then you can see we increased the circuit breaker and the school choice. The increase in the school choice, we'll talk about that on the back page a little bit, but I'm okay with that. The circuit breaker, we The circuit breaker, we did increase that $100,000. There is a, they are working on supplemental funding to try to increase the circuit breaker for this year, and they are projecting it to be higher next year. So, you know, this year it was 65%. The supplemental funding, they're going to get it up to at least 68. It's possible it might be up to like 72 or 75, although at least we figured 68. So we're getting, you know, an extra 3% when you're talking, you know, if you're talking $750,000, every percent is 7,500 bucks, so 3% is another 22,000. You know, so we get an extra 3% this year, an extra 3% the next year. That's another 45,000 or so in, in circuit breaker we would get. So I felt comfortable with the adding, increasing that a little bit. Also, there are a few out-of-district placements that we kept in here that we do think are kids that will be ultimately able to be serviced by the alternative program, but we haven't been able to, you know, officially kind of make that happen yet, so we didn't want to not have those kids accounted for. So if we want to talk about school choice, flip to the back.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
The alternative school, the, I think there's what, four?
Yeah.
The teacher sub.
Sorry, some shouldn't say some, some should actually be the, that should be the course registrations.
So that, if those three, and it was three, right? Initially, there's three students you thought would take advantage of it.
Yep.
If they didn't, if they did take advantage of that, wouldn't those four things be paid for by the money that we, so it would?
Potentially.
Potentially, right, again, thank you. It would be potential, it wouldn't cost us.
Right, which is why, which is why I feel like we're comfortable kind of increasing that circuit breaker number. Because it kind of accounts for it. But ultimately, we feel like in the long run, as this works, we should, we should get savings for it, yeah.
And the contracted services, what is that?
The, where it said instructional contracted services?
10 grand, yeah.
Yeah, that was actually money we had earmarked to look at different programs like edgenuity and stuff in the middle school. That basically, we kind of just reduced that amount.
Okay, so we're not losing any of it.
No, it's not a current program. It was actually something we're going to try to maybe add on that we decided, I think there's, still might even be five grand or so in that line item, so we can do some. But we'll, but we reduced it.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd say of pretty much all the adjustments made on that front page, the only thing that really, you know, in terms of the cuts, the only thing that really, I think, impacts a, an initiative or whatever you want to call it, a program that we've been looking at in a negative way is the fact that the full-time athletic director position was cut. If you notice, on my list last time, we had reinstating athletic fees. We preserved the removal of the athletic fees. So those are, those are preserved, yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt your, your speaking. When we're looking at the fees of the alternative guidance council?
Yeah.
Point five, the guidance council, point five?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we can't just consolidate that to one full-time person?
It is one full-time person, but we kind of like, it's, so what is it? Sort of like an existing staff member that we kind of reclassified in the budget?
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why that's, yeah, 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 I know, it's kind of a, it's kind of goofy, but that's.
I'm just looking at the numbers and they weren't.
Yeah, so it's, so it's an existing staff member that we just kind of, we kind of split them.
Thank you.
So, all right, so the, all right, so to go to the, so if we look at the back now, and we want to start talking about, let's talk about athletics and school choice a little bit here. So, we had two major athletic sort of initiatives. One was to eliminate the athletic fees. One was to add a full-time athletic director. Right now, with the adjustments we made to this budget, the athletic fees would still be eliminated, okay? But right now, with the adjustments to the budget on the other side, there would be no change to the athletic director. So when we look at school choice, if we just walk through that first column on here, most of the, most of the cells are the same, repeated over until they kind of get to like the, down to the bottom there. So, if you can see, most of this was the stuff that was published in the budget book that we've been giving out for how many months, that the, the initial balance at the beginning of this fiscal year was 181,000. We anticipated 471,000 in revenue. We budgeted 404,000 in expenses this year. So we would estimate that on July 1st of this year, we would have a balance in our school choice account of $247,000. Next year, we were anticipating 440,000 when we did all of our budgeting, okay? That was based off the 5,000 a student, for the number of students we had, the 88 students or whatever that reflects. The, we just submitted our special education adjustment for school choice. Those were due, it was at the end of April, those were due. So when we actually went through and did the special education adjustment for our school choice for the April deadline, basically, we submitted a claim for 119,384. Those are special education costs that occurred above the, basically above like that school choice rate. It's similar to kind of like a circuit breaker type claim, but it's for school choice, the student school choice is in, who requires special ed services. So, that is an additional sort of special education revenue. We should end up getting that added on. So because we were able to get an additional 119,000 in revenue, we, to make the budget work, we added 94,000 in expenses. Because we already had budgeted more than we were taking in, right? We budgeted 500, but we knew we were getting 440. So if you look at that right now, if we keep the AD salary at, the full-time AD salary at zero, which means zero additional money, obviously the original, the current stipend amount is in the budget. That means our FY19 spending deficit, I guess you could, I made that word, I'm not sure if that's the correct word or not, I guess, but basically saying, we would spend 35,000 more from school choice than we received in FY19. But that would still leave us a balance of 212,000 in the school choice. So that's fine, okay? The only thing is, when we talk about that deficit spending there, that'll eventually catch up to you, right? So if you do too much, you know, you're going to, you're going to run out of that cushion or that little bit that's built up there. And then part of the reason why you have a little cushion in there, you don't spend it else, because you never know what it's going to be. If our special ed adjustment were way down next year, because it's a different population of kids, or if school choice numbers went down, we might get less. If school choice goes up, it's a little more predictable. So then I looked at it and I said, you know, that being said, 212,000 is, you know, we don't need to be, as much as we want to be fiscally responsible with how we're budgeting, this isn't like this is our savings account, you know? We're not trying to build up school choice as high as we can get it. We need to use it for the operating expenditures of the district. So I tried to look at two different scenarios. The middle column there is, you can see the change of if we added an additional $30,000 for an athletic director salary, that would probably allow us to post for a, basically like a part-time athletic director, you know, and hopefully we'd be able to get someone in to be in an administrative role, have some flexible hours, or basically, it's not necessarily going to be, you know, they don't have to be at 8:00 in the morning, they're basically working the events. That would create our deficit spending of 65,000, but then that leaves us a balance of 182. So if you look at that, you're sitting there going, if my deficit is 65, my balance is 180, I'm pretty comfortable that I can probably make this work for at least three more years, right? And now it gives us three years to adjust and figure out, is this position working? Is there stuff we need to move into the general fund? Is there, you know, are participation numbers increasing? Are fundraising, you know, are we getting more fundraising opportunities, those types of things? The third column, the final column, has the AD salary at 60,000. My concern with the AD salary at 60,000, although that would allow us to have more of that full-time position we talked about, where it's not just the AD, but also the AD and the, maybe that community outreach and alumni coordinator. But that creates that deficit spending of 95,000. And then if you look, that leaves the balance only at 150. Which means you're really talking that unless we change something in a year and a half, we're going to run out of school choice. And I know last time that happened, there had to be an override and it just, you know, and so I just kind of want to try to avoid creating a funding cliff for ourselves. If we're going to make an initiative, I want us to try to make it sustainable and successful. So, you know, I think, I still think that if we were to post, we could post for a, you know, my recommendation, I think, would be to go with the middle option. I think if we posted for a part-time athletic director, we tried to get someone to come in on basically like an admin contract with some flexible hours. We make that person really more of an, give that person a little more administrative duties in terms of, you know, really trying to evaluate coaches, making sure that they're, you know, have some input at least on the hiring process. And then the, and also really being focused on, on reaching out to parents and students and trying to get participation numbers. And I think that's, if someone is going to come in on a, on an administrative type contract, you know, they would fall under the same type of evaluation system as other administrators. We'd set goals. Those goals would be able to work on things like student participation numbers and community outreach and, you know, kind of the oversight of coaches and making sure we're providing feedback and trying to improve programs. So, I think, I think that that allows us to, you know, I think we have an opportunity there to try to see if we can find that right candidate to kind of allow us to take that step forward. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, there's always, you know, the government's looking at, you know, trying to incorporate the foundation budget reforms, those types of things. So, you know, you never know what kind of changes are going to happen in three years, right? We're hoping that if we can bring someone in and they can, and we eliminate athletic fees and really be focused, you know, primarily on athletics, then we might, you know, that might help us with school choice, that might help increase school choice, and might be able to do more fundraising type stuff, help the athletic fund, and then we might be able to maybe slowly build that up to a more full-time position instead of going from zero to 60. So, I think that would be, you know, that'd be my recommendation. You know, I think, I think that, you know, it's just, athletic director is a very difficult position, and I know we've talked about it here. It's a difficult position, it's got a lot of time demands. And I think that by moving to some model like this, hopefully we can find someone who, you know, athletic director is able to be, even though it's still kind of a part-time position, athletic director gets to be their, kind of their primary responsibility. Whereas under our current model, you know, it's always, teacher is your primary responsibility, athletic director is something you get a little bit of time and a small stipend to do. So I think that, you know, moving forward, you know, if the committee is okay with going with the, I mean, we can certainly, you guys can talk when I'm done talking here, but the, you know, if the committee's okay with moving with, maybe moving forward with the part-time one, I can try to draft a job description, revise the one from the years last year a little bit, try to look at some of the salary parameters out, like the timeframe parameters. I think we would want to make a description that would be a little bit flexible in those areas, because I think that, you know, we don't know what type of candidate we might attract. And someone who is, you know, a, you know, a recent graduate looking to get into something might be able to, might be able to come up with a slightly different contract than someone who's maybe, you know, retired or was doing this in another state or something like that. So, you know, I think that there, you know, there's a variety of candidates we could get, so I think we'd want to try to leave a job advertisement kind of with some flexibility in there so that we can try to do it. But I think at least if we have this, this 30,000 plus really the stipend that's in there already in the budget, you know, you're talking, you know, somewhere between a 30 and 40,000 range to try to, to try to fill a position. And I think, I think we could probably get someone to do that.
I mostly, I mostly agree with everything that, that you said, and I do appreciate this. I think the way this is laid out explains it very clearly. I mean, normally I am uncomfortable funding any position through school choice money, but I do think because, I mean, one of the ultimate goals of a full-time athletic director would be to try to, you know, improve that ratio of student out, student in. That's like really the end goal. But there's really no, like, there's no guarantee that that investment is going to give us dividends like in one year. And what you've laid out here shows that we could, you know, conservatively, we could probably support this with school choice money for like two years at the most. And then, you know, if all things being equal, right, if the 60, so if we did do with the 60,000, right, then we're left only with 152,000, you know, and then you don't, it's, I mean, you know, part of me still wants to kind of like fight for the full.
This is killing you, Ed, I know.
Yeah, I know, it's killing me. But I mean, you got to be, I do understand, have to be cognizant of the volatility of school choice. And ultimately, you know, we're trying to invest in it so that we can improve school choice and build that fund up. So it is a little bit of a catch-22, but, I mean, as long as, I'm not totally giving up on the idea, but I am willing, the way this is presented, if I'm willing to take like that intermediate step between what we have now, what we would ultimately like to have, and take a look at taking the middle option and structuring it with a part-time, a part-time athletic director position. And, you know, it, kind of the way that we talked about the full-time position, almost half of that, we were envisioning it like, half of that role, or, you know, close to half of it, was going to be on like alumni engagement and marketing. So, you know, maybe that just, you know, like you're saying, maybe we just take that out for now, and we can still focus on, you know, having, having a dedicated evaluator of, of, of coaches and programs, someone that's looking out for new sports, someone that can help out with like student engagement. So I still think there's a lot of things with the extra time that we'll be giving to a part-time athletic director that the, this position would be able to do that, the way it's currently set up, they wouldn't be able to do it. It just has no, not enough hours in the day for that. So, I do, as, as much as it does, it does kill me for, I have been fighting for this for like over a year, I'm not giving up totally, but I do think that it makes sense this, to do it this way. I think it's the, it's the prudent thing to do, and I think it'll give us a chance to evaluate the impact that the incremental changes do to the, to both school choice and athletics and, and just kind of, you know, feedback from the community on like thing, you know, that we'll, we'll have, people will be, they'll be excited for, for this investment, even though it's, it's not like totally what we want at the, like the end game. But it's, I think it's definitely a step in the right direction. And, you know, I do think that it's, it's the, like I said, it's the prudent thing to do, but it's still, still a step in the right direction. And then I'll just start bugging everybody again next year, I suppose. See how this one works out once we get the feedback from it. But, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the, with that, that part-time. I do, I do think that's a, that's a good improvement. And I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts, but I mean, I would, I would make a motion to, I don't know if we need to make a motion or if that's.
No, I mean, if you're comfortable with it, what I can do is I can bring back, so we have a meeting in a week, we had a short turnaround. I can make sure that we capture all of this stuff to give you a more detailed budget, not just like the one sheet of changes, give you an updated budget to reflect with the information from the finance committee to reflect these changes. And I can give you a draft job description, and then maybe you guys, we could just do a motion at next meeting to kind of, you know, approve that budget as the, as our current, you know, budget that we're supporting. And then, if you guys are comfortable with that job description, then we can, we can probably, if you want to approve that job description, then we can pretty much post.
Yeah, let's see, in our, yeah, I'm looking forward to next week, to be honest with you, but I think the benefit, and I talked with Ed a little bit about this today, is, you know, when you start with this, this part-time, and I think it's 20 hours is kind of the baseline, but it's not only going to save the school department and salary, but it's also, the town right now is not going to have to pay the benefit side of that. You know, if we, if we create a full-time job, you know, diving right in, and you'll tell, like, again, if it works, great, but if it doesn't, not only are you going to have to take a full-time position and look at that person in the eye and say, hey, you're out of a job, but the town's saddled with the retirement and, you know, and medical costs and all the stuff associated with a full-time job going in. I will say, you know, I mean, the money, the 30,000 plus, you know, the seven, I think it is, which is currently the stipend, somewhere in that ballpark. You know, the way I envisioned, and I was, I want to thank you for keeping the, the athletic fees, at least now, and like I said to everybody on the board, you know, after two years, if the coaches come back and this, and it, money wasn't an issue then, you know, so far, but is, I, you know, right now, the, every, every coach, every, every sport goes out and they do some type of fundraising, whether it's directly to the merchants or they sell stuff. I envision the, the AD doing it by, by season. So right now, we're not going to charge anything, but I, I think, you know, you look at any of the youth sports, whether it's baseball, football, whatever's going on in town, they, you know, not only do you pay to play, but they also have a fundraiser, like, you know, calendar raffles or whatever else they get going on. So, the way I look at it is, is, let's say with the fall sports coming up, if that AD goes out as an individual, and, you know, the coaches don't have to do it as individual sports, he goes out and does the fundraising, he would either, well, I guess it's the same amount, either pay his own salary or make up for the 30 grand that were, but just by simple fundraising, so, you know, it's not individual, whether you give every kid, you know, 10 calendar raffles, whatever, and they all sell them, they're all, they're all hitting the same thing and it, you know, pay in the, in the long run. So, you know, I am, and then, you know, also if you take someone part-time, and like you said, you advertise and say, listen, we're going to try this, and, you know, if it sells itself and it. itself and increases, fine, it may also, you know, be out of a job. It's, you know, it's a part-time position, not some, you know, not some, you know, some that's left a teaching job or a coaching job or, or, you know, whatever, and now they're out, you know, because it didn't pan out, so, you know.
And we can always look at the, you know, we, I think, I'll try to, I'll spend some time this week to try to make sure that we draft a job description, I think is detailed enough to explain the position, but maybe with enough flexibility in it so that we can try to be open to different peoples, you know, to, so we can catch as wide of potential applicants as possible. And then we can kind of look and we can, we can kind of, you know, as we go through the hiring process, sort of figure out what we can, you know, really afford and kind of work through. And, and, you know, then I think we can, we can go from there. And if, and if we're not, you know, if we're not happy with that applicant pool, we can always come back and we can decide, you know, we'll figure it out, you know? But I think, I think this is a, it's a start, you know, we see what's out there, and, and I, you know, we, there's been, I had a, we had a great situation when I was in Winchandon, where we tried something like this for actually way less money than this, and we just happened to catch the right person at the right time in, in her life, and she was a phenomenal A.D. for us, and she's still there, like, you know, eight or 10 years later or something like that.
So we can offer a little bit more and she'll come back here, right?
Yeah.
So it's all about, right? No, thanks.
All right, so are you comfortable with that? Then I'll, we'll just do a, I'll try to get a final version that reflects all of this together, which we pretty much have, and we'll Karen here next meeting, and then I'll get that job description, and we can maybe vote at that time to just sort of say, yes, this is, this is how we plan on proceeding.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Two facilities updates. The Clinton, we, we had lead testing done at all of the, we had lead testing in the, for the water in all three buildings a couple weekends ago, and there were two fixtures at the middle school that tested positive for lead in the, the first draw. Like, they do two samples, they do one that's like, you have to, they do it first thing in the morning, so you have to do one when it's been sitting in the pipes, and then you do one after it's, it's run for a couple seconds. So we had two fixtures, they weren't drinking fountains, they were like sinks, that had tested on their first draw to be slightly over the acceptable limit. So those, those have been shut off. We're going to look into, because it was only in two specific fixtures, it wasn't throughout the building, they think it's in the actual, you know, the, the actual faucet itself, kind of, or the, you know, immediate lines coming into that. So we'll look at replacing those. Right now, they are turned off, and we are working with them to, they're just finalizing all of the other testing, just to make sure they haven't had any other readings, and we will, we will send a letter out communicating those findings once we, once we have all the, we're just following the guidelines at this point on, on what we need to do, but I have that information, so I want to share it with you guys, and, you know, like I said, I don't think it's anything, you know, it's not, I don't think it's anything to panic about, I think it was just those two, you know, two sinks that were, whatever the faucets or the fixtures on, and they, that, that first draw tested a little high. The C.H.S. heating system, I don't know if we talked about this last time or not, but we did have a situation here. Did I talk to you guys about the expansion tanks already?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're still just working on that, trying to see if we can get some emergency repairs done on that. I met with Russ, he's got a couple different vendors coming in to just kind of look at how we can, how we can get this thing back, back up and running. They were able to get it to go a little bit, but now we're pretty much just, it's a good timing for this.
Steve, have we had any discussions with the town about possibly restructuring those warrant articles so that all the facility stuff can go on one warrant article for facilities and not having it be-
Like by the school?
Yeah, the more, because the more, I know, I know, Bernie's brought it up a couple times, the more I think about it, I mean, it just, it just makes a lot of sense, like I, I, that's kind of the reason that we created that, that we created that position was like, so-
We're not fighting each other.
-all the buildings would have a centralized, like, department that would take care of everything, and I just feel like, you know, maybe, I just feel like when you break it up into each, each department like that, I don't, you know, there's, there's also the risk, I don't know if this would happen, usually the voters in the town hall are pretty good, but like if they, you know, who's to say that, you know, he, so he splits it up into three different departments, and he gets the, the first two warrant articles, and say by the third one, the, the people at the town hall are like exhausted with warrant articles and stuff, they don't get it. So now, you know, he doesn't, he has to spend on what the warrant article says, and to me, it just would be, make way more sense for everything to just be prioritized into, into one warrant article. And then, you know, possibly, if, if people object to certain things and he has to restructure, but I don't know if they've, if, have we, have we discussed that?
I haven't yet, and I can talk to, I can talk to Mike about it, Mike Ward a little bit, and Russ, and just try to see, I don't, because honestly, I don't even know, I don't even know what the other departments' warrant articles look like. I don't know if there's another capital warrant article that's similar to ours or not, so-
Yeah.
-I think that we could, I can at least have that discussion with them and make sure that, you know, if there is, if it does make sense to, you know, sort of re, reworded as one, big capital improvements. I do know that that is hopefully the plan. I actually think that one, one of the plans is going to hopefully be, you know, at some point, I think we have some, you know, a couple debt exclusions and things that are going to be coming off the town, that we might try to do another larger one that would be like that, like a general capital improvement debt exclusion for the town, not us, but like-
Right.
-like the, the facilities director doing it, and that money would be, would be borrowing to fix whatever he's identified as urgent in all the buildings. So I think that's the, I mean, it's still the direction we're heading.
Yeah.
And I know that definitely makes sense, I know it's, you raised the same question before, before, so I'll try to look into it, and like I said, I don't know what the other departments are even asking for at this point to say, yeah, it makes sense to combine themself.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Director of Pupil Services, we're starting to put together a little search committee for that. The posting closed on Friday, we had 12 applicants, so I think we'll start with probably an initial paper screening with our search committee, just to review those 12 applicants, see how we feel about that, see if we think that's a sufficient pool or not, and, and if we're concerned about it, if we feel like it's not a sufficient pool, we could potentially come back and either look at re-advertising, potentially with a different title, or potentially even advertising at this point for interim, if that's what we decided we wanted to do. So I will, we'll start by just, I'll start by getting our screening committee together so we can talk about the criteria and do at least a paper screening of those and see, see how we feel about those candidates.
Did you get someone from the school? I know we kind of left that up in the air when we-
Yeah, and no one really reached out to me saying they wanted to be on it, so I don't know if anyone, if you, if you, if you want to, I'm still putting that together, I reached out to a couple people, I reached out to Kelly, and, and we'll, you know, we'll be probably trying to schedule something in the next, you know, hopefully this week, if we can fit it in, if not early next week, to just kind of sit down and look through those and kind of come up with it. So, you know, I think with 12 applicants, you never know, I've kind of glanced through the resumes, I didn't really study them, you know, and I think we'll, we'll look at those and see, see if we feel it's a deep enough pool or feel if we need to go back out. The last, we're just an Alice training update. The staff had all received their logins and had started doing their online Alice training. They had some time on the 8th, that P.D. day, and we added an hour onto the day for that snow day, they had that hour that was added on to complete their online training. All staff have to have it done by the 18th so that we can start talking about some of the stuff in person on the 22nd, that is another hour from that day, so. We went right along with that, we had our safety committee meeting to start talking about how we're going to work with the Alice company and reviewing our policies and procedures over the summer. I think that's it.
Great. Do we have any updates from the policy committee?
Not at the start. Nothing from the market committee.
Nothing from the market.
It's going to be a tough time of year for such a committee.
Anything on their old business?
Can I just throw one thing out? So we have a meeting on the, our next meeting is the 21st, so it's one week from now. The Monday after that is the-
Memorial Day.
Yep, Memorial Day. The Monday after that is the-
Town meeting.
Town meeting, and then the 11th is our election, but I still think we should be able to have a meeting on election night, that should be fine, right? I mean, so are we, are we okay with June 11th as being a, a school committee meeting? That would be our normal one anyway, it'd be the second, the second Monday of the month. So if everyone's fine, we'll plan on June 11th. What we'd like to do at that meeting, we'll recognize our retirees, we'll invite our retirees to that meeting, we'll recognize them, we'll kind of do some year-end goals updates, that kind of stuff. And the only thing we can think about for next week is if we want to, I think sometimes you've had one meeting in June, sometimes you've had two, so it just depends on if we feel you guys want to have a second meeting in June, or if we just want to schedule one, you know, looking at July. I know there's a week I'll be away in July during the, for the M.A.S.S. executive institute, and, you know, I'm sure you guys all have schedules, so we want to, we might want to try to nail down a, a July date that we think will work soon too, so.
Anything on their new business?
I just got one thing under old business, I'm sorry, the memorial that we, when I was working with, yeah, well, I haven't, I think the sticking point now is, is we had talked about before, is, is who's going to pay what?
Yeah.
You know, between the Lions Club and the Legion.
Yeah.
So, you know, I did tell them, you know, moving that, you know, adding that other plaque, and I talked to Mr. Benass from the Legion, so I don't, I mean, it's obviously not going to get done by Memorial Day, but-
Right.
-I have to talk to, I haven't talked to Jenny West again, I'll reach out to her, but I think right now, it's just a matter of, as she sent that email to us, they were good with it, knowing the Legion was going to pay part of it, they wanted to make some modifications, that's kind of where they're at now, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll hit her up, Memorial Day coming up, I'll-
But by next Memorial Day, we'll have that thing-
Oh, yeah, it's going to be shining, shining.
Under new business, I said one little announcement, it's not really business, but, so they, we did have W.C.V.B. meteorologists come to the elementary school, I think it was like last week or something, can't remember the exact date. While the meteorologist was there, they filmed one of those morning wake-up call segments that they do. So our Clinton Elementary School students will be on the wake-up call on W.C.V.B. tomorrow morning, I think they said it should be played at 5:15 and 6:15, so.
Both in the morning or one in the afternoon?
No, in the morning, I think they do it 5:15 in the morning and 6:15 in the morning, the little wake-up call, so.
Tell me how that went.
What?
Yes, please.
The elementary school, yeah. I don't know which grades were, I think it was a, I think it was an older grade, I think it was a third grade.
That was the third grade.
Third grade, right?
Very good.
Yeah. What day did they come, was it last week? Was it Tuesday?
It was last week, it was a makeup several times during the week.
Oh, okay.
Weather, so she was finally able to make it last weekend, and had a dog for her grade kids.
Anything else on their new business?
I don't think so.
Is there an executive session?
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't think we need an executive session tonight, yeah, I don't think so.
Do we have a motion for a adjournment?
So moved.
Yeah, finally, first one.